Monday, April 22, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by Clerk Extraordinaire Mike O'Brien. And the pledge will be led by Alderman Thibodeau.
Almighty God, we have the high order and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fellas, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and the greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call.
Budget review?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To tell you the truth, it doesn't really help. Alderman Wiltshire?
I'm here.
Alderman Kelly?
I'm here.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Clement?
Here.
Alderman Jettie? Alderman Thibault?
Here. Thibault or Thibodeau?
You're pissed.
Alderman Warren? Yeah, I am here on Zoom. I'm currently traveling. I'm at my hotel in Orlando, and my daughter is in the other room.
Welcome. Alderman Timmons? And Alderman Gedekebeba?
Here.
Okay. I think I got everybody, Mr. Chairman, and it's Thibault, T-H-I, right?
T-H-I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tonight, we have public hearings on several pieces of legislation, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we do have a public hearing on several items this evening, several resolutions. As we go through each one, we will have someone come up and talk to each one of the resolutions. If there are any amplifying questions that any of the Aldermen have, they may be asked at that time and answered, and then we will start the testimony in favor and opposition. So the first public hearing is on R. 24033, proposing amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health. Is there anyone here that's going to speak to that?
That would be me, Alderman Dowd.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So this is, I'm the prime sponsor of this resolution. There should be a packet, a PowerPoint presentation for the Aldermen. If not, it'll be sent out to the entire board for the Personnel Administration Committee. Essentially, the PowerPoint outlines a lot of evidence-based data and science and research regarding multidisciplinary teams in public health and the healthcare field. Currently, our Board of Health is not multidisciplinary. It is one discipline. It is just physicians. The current charter calls for two physicians and one general member of the public. This board has chosen to have all three physicians as physicians. I'm putting this charter forward for a couple of reasons. After being an alternate representative to the Board of Health last term, I attended a meeting and observed other meetings via YouTube. After they were going through their certification process, it became clear that there are some issues that the board deals with that are more social determinants of health, that aren't particularly in the wheelhouse of a physician, and more in the wheelhouse of direct care providers like social workers and nurses. And that's what initially brought this to my attention, to bring forth to the full board this term. I've spoken to many members of the community who are in support of this. You might hear from members of the Soup Kitchen. Later today, I spoke into the President of the Soup Kitchen Board, who is also supportive of this measure. The National Association of Social Workers, New Hampshire Chapter, is supportive of adding these two positions onto the Board of Health. Essentially, if it does get past the BOA, it would go to the next municipal election for the city to decide, the voter, if these two other healthcare professionals should be added to the board. Keep in mind that if a nurse and a social worker are added, the majority of the board, by charter, would still be healthcare professionals. In that case, three would be medical professionals, requiring two physicians and a nurse. A nurse is a medical professional. And then a social worker is a healthcare professional, and then there would be a general member of the board at large, who could be, you know, any person with no particular healthcare qualifications. But that's the general sense. There'll be more presented at the Administrative Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. I'm sorry, I'm having a long day. I was at Disney World, so I'm trying to catch up on all my thoughts from going from having a good day to now working. But in general, if you guys have any questions, I can answer them for you. I'm sure you'll hear from others as well. But in general, I cannot find any science or evidence-based research that says that the physician-led model is the model in healthcare or public health that is current and active today. That's something that was active in the early 20th century and has dissipated in almost all health organizations, including public health, across all developed nations. Thank you.
Any of the Aldermen have clarifying questions? Seeing none. All right. Now, on R. 24033, I'll call for testimony in favor. Seeing no one. Testimony in opposition. Please come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I am Dr. Tony Storrs. I live at 17 Cameron Drive, Nashua. I am the Chairman of the Board of Health, and I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk. Not the best public speaker in the world. Sometimes my voice will trail off, but hopefully I'll. And the last time I saw you, I didn't have to have glasses either, so I'm getting old. So I do appreciate this opportunity to speak against the proposed legislation. As spokesperson for the Board of Health, I would like to say that this legislation would hamper the board. We all have experienced situations where something looks good on paper and is either not needed or a solution looking for a problem that doesn't exist. Let's consider the positives of the current board. We work very well as a cohesive team. Our years of experience and diverse backgrounds bring a wealth of clinical knowledge and different points of view. We respect each other, air out our concerns freely, and have no political agenda. In fact, since day one, becoming a member of the board, I said there was no place for politics in medicine. I would serve only if we left politics at the door, and as Chair, I have repeated that statement as new members have signed on. This was about 25 years ago, well before COVID, and we all saw how politics can distort scientific knowledge and decision-making. Our relationship on the board is fostered over time, also embraces the department personnel, who know, trust, and respect our commitment and service. And they let, and let me say without a doubt, the feeling is more than mutual, for without them, we could not achieve the great results we have created, we have been credited with. I would ask you not to change the great dynamics of this effective and efficient team. Remember, our small size allows us to be quick, nimble, and very productive. I think the charter, as it's written now, says for two doctors and another person. I want no one here to be misinformed or misled. I am not a medical doctor, and I'm a dentist. So there is currently two doctors, as your charter says, and you can consider me a layperson or not, but I'm a doctor of dental medicine. Let's look at some of the reasons why we're against this legislation. There is no need to expand the board to include individuals that the Board of Health can draw upon in other fields, which we already do. For example, we use Dr. Gronik regarding infectious diseases. If we have a question, he's there to answer them. For those issues that call for more than a quick referral, the Chair can format hot committees to tackle more complex issues, have, that have the possible, and have the possible solutions, reported back to us after a more in-depth evaluation. Example of this is the Ethics Committee that Dr. Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum, a Board of Health member, has brilliantly chaired monthly since 2023. If we take the concept of board expansion to a logical conclusion, then we would have to expand the board to include members representing all types of conditions that we encounter, such as, but not limited to, infectious disease, pediatrics, geriatrics, substance misuse, mental health, immunology, family medicine, prevention, health, nutrition, pulmonology, and obstetrics, just to name a few. Everybody could say they need to be on the board. And not to be left out, I'm putting in a request for a few dentists. What was that, someone? I think we all can see every profession would want a seat at the table, and rightfully deserving so. And so we start down that slippery slope, making the board larger and more unruly. My understanding of the legislation, and on my copy, excuse me, allergies, on my copy, I think it's, unless there's been an updated version of it, it basically, when I do the math, is written, you would be changing it to four, not five. Two MDs, one RN, and one licensed social worker. So that's four people. But let's just assume that it was meant to read, to continue with the current number of three, but also to include one RN and one licensed social worker to equal five. You would now have a majority of the Board of Health making decisions and voting on health policy who are non-doctors. Is that really what we want from the Board of Health? If there was a clear mandate to add any changes to the Board of Health, then we would have been informed during the recertification process. In fact, they gave high praises to the department and the board, and how we have helped the citizens of Nashua over the past five years. There were no recommendations regarding board membership or social worker model. However, they were very impressed by the department's continued proactive improvements, this resulting from the leadership of Director Bagley and her team. And I have to say, Alderman Timmons, representing the Board of Health and the Board of Aldermen, was extremely, represented extremely well, and significantly impressed the interviewers. As you know, we are the first and only certified, and now recertified, public health department in the state. I believe in only one of a handful in all of New England. I am very proud of that accomplishment for the citizens of Nashua, the department personnel, and the Board of Health. I will close by saying, I hope this brings into focus a little more what we do, who we are, and why we do not need this legislation. We are fulfilling our roles and serving the people well. Isn't that our mandate? As always, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Again, name and address for the record.
My name is Christian Talix. I live at 23 Temple Street, Apartment 301. Being that I will be able to speak at every opportunity for testimony, I pass this off. So I don't, I will not speak currently. I will wait till a later time to, I think I oppose.
Oh, hi. My name is Chuck Capetta, 2300 Southway Drive, Nashua. I'm here as a member of the Board of Health. I'm a physician, and I oppose this legislative change. I've been a pediatrician at Dartmouth for the last 35 years. I'm also the school physician for the Nashua and Hollis Brookline Schools for the past 30, and have been a proud member of the Nashua Public Health Department Board of Health for the past 10. Excuse me. In my role on the Board of Health, I sit with two other doctors with over 70 years of healthcare experience, and our own Board of Health Director is a fully qualified RN, who has her master's in public health. Each of us has an extensive and diverse background in social health determinants, and you can't be a health provider without knowledge and experience in how issues of family life, finances, access to healthcare, transportation, housing, sickness, behavioral health, and every issue in between plays a role in our lives and the differences between wellness and illness. Our own Nashua Public Health Department is an award-winning, fully accredited, as Dr. Storrs mentioned, and now recently accredited, public health department, and remains the only one in the Granite State, a fact that all of us in this room should be very proud of. And under the direction of Director Bagley and her amazing team of highly dedicated and committed professionals, which does include a whole department of trained social workers, the greater Nashua area is blessed beyond words to have at our fingertips such a unique skill set of team players. Using the COVID experience, again, like Dr. Storrs said, I promise we didn't talk about this, as an example, the Board of Health was able to utilize and lean on just such diverse colleagues with subject matter experience, including our own public health medical director, who's an infectious disease doctor, who helped us, along with so many other experts, how to navigate such a difficult and once-in-a-lifetime experience. Be it behavioral health, or social health, or any other topics, our nimble Board of Health cannot only respond quickly, as we did with the mask mandate, which I, all of you were part of, thank you for efforts there, during COVID, to our present development of our public health ethics committee, which we're now doing on our own time to get this committee off the ground as fast as possible over the past three months. To this end, the makeup of the three-member Nashua Board of Health mandate has been existent since the charter set back in 1915. For me personally, our group works so well together due to mutual respect of what we bring to the table, how our own professional experiences cover our citizens from pediatrics to geriatrics, with the backing of our director and her colleagues, including nursing and social services. As such, I have seen none, nor have heard any compelling reason to change this number just for change's sake. I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Bobby Bagley, Chief Public Health Official and Director for our City of Nashua's Division of Public Health and Community Services, and I speak in opposition for this change in the ordinance as well, in support of our Board of Health members, and also in support of the, and representing the support of our division's strategic leadership team, which is also weighed in on the current change. Currently, at the, at the Board of Health level, as it was mentioned, we do have the expertise of our two physicians and our dentists, and then you also have the expertise of your division staff as well, a mix of individuals that have public health background training, and in public health background training, it also includes deep, deep, deep training in the social determinants of health, and also the experience over the years from the diversity of the staff, the staff of the division, that are able to provide input on decisions that are made and things that are brought forth to our Board of Health on issues that we've been dealing with over the past number of years that I've been employed at the city, in the role of the director, as a chief public health nurse, and then as a public health nurse, back, starting in 1997. Our Board of Health has been in a position that allows for presentations to come forth for them, for questions to be answered, for there not to be any missing or lack of information that involves preserving and promoting the health of the City of Nashua at the level that we've been practicing for the past decades. As it was stated, there really is no gap in information or knowledge on the Board of Health, with the support of the Division of Public Health and Community Services staff as well. The Board does work very effectively and efficiently, as it now stands, and the addition of additional members of a social worker and a nurse, when you have already that staff that's already present, to me at this point, would be irrelevant. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Once again, I want to mention that Alderman Lopez joined us on Zoom at about 7:15.
Point of order, Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
I just forgot to mention that the mayor is also in support of this going to the ballot, and he appoints the Director and Chief Nursing Officer. Thank you.
All right. Once again, testimony in favor of R. 24033. Seeing none.
Point of order.
Yes.
I also spoke to the mayor, and he said no such thing to me. So I'm not saying that he, you know, he said that we need to leave it up to us to make the decisions.
So this is going to go to committees, so we can have that discussion in committee when it's brought up. Once again, testimony in opposition. Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing on R. 24033 at 7:23 PM. I will open, I'll open the hearing on R. 24035 at 7:23 PM. R. 24035 changing the purpose of up to $2,200,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the design and construction of a Division of Public Works office facility to the design of a Public Works Division garage. Who's going to speak to that?
I will, Alderman Dowd, if that's okay. Good evening. Lisa Fotto, Director of Public Works. As Alderman Dowd just mentioned, I'm here to speak in favor of Resolution R. 24035. We began the journey of consolidating Public Works under one roof more than 10 years ago. Many of you will recall the decrepit working conditions at our facilities, including inadequate restrooms, locker rooms, and break rooms, mold, air quality issues, and rodents. We're very appreciative of the support we received from the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Public Works to begin the process of bringing DPW together by constructing an office building. This has allowed administration, engineering, and parks and recreation to be under one roof. This first phase was a great start. We have not been able to achieve our goal of consolidating Public Works without a garage. We have roughly 400 pieces of equipment worth approximately $35 million. Most of it continues to be stored outside. Challenges of outside storage includes deterioration due to equipment being stored in the elements, rodents chewing through wiring harnesses, sun-causing dry rot, frozen brake lines, difficulty performing pre- and post-trip equipment inspections in the dark, and cleaning snow off of vehicles. The addition of fleet storage and a truck wash will increase the longevity of our equipment. Street and fleet employees continue to work in undesirable conditions. Both departments will need to remain at Stadium Drive due to operational needs until a garage is built. Our fleet department services vehicles for not only Public Works, but the entire city, including administrative services, parking, community development, public health, schools, and assists the PD as needed. Our fleet department mechanics use pits that are not safe or OSHA compliant. They do not have the space to adequately work on more than one piece of equipment at a time. It would also be a huge benefit if all equipment was in one location, so that preventative maintenance could be done as time allows. In summary, we were $2.2 million under budget in the consolidation, in the, excuse me, in the construction of the Public Works office building. We're requesting to repurpose some or all of these bond funds for the design of a Public Works garage. A design would give us a more accurate idea of what the cost of building a Public Works garage would be. The Board of Public Works voted unanimously in favor of this resolution. If the Aldermen approve the repurpose of the funds, the Joint Committee of the Board of Public Works and Infrastructure would oversee the design as they did the construction of our office building. Thank you.
Okay. Before you leave, that's ought to serve two purposes, one, explaining what it is, and two, testimony in favor. But do any of the Aldermen have any questions, clarifying questions for the legislation? Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'll open up for additional testimony in favor.
Chairman Dowd?
Yes.
Hi, Tim Cummings, Administrative Services, if I could speak, Ms. Chairman.
Do you want to wait till June speaks, or you want to? June Lemons?
Yeah, happy to, happy to wait. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm June Lemon. I'm a Commissioner on the Board of Public Works, as Director Fotto has pointed out. We have talked about this, and we agreed unanimously to ask the board to approve this money for design services for a Public Works garage. If you have not taken a tour of the current garage situation, I urge you to do so. As a matter of fact, it is the only thing that I have received serious complaint issues about as a Commissioner, not from the workers, who are really willing to put up with, I think, a substandard workspace, but from people in the community who have to dodge some of the equipment because we have no place to put it. So if you are using, sharing the space, the parking lot, if you are going over to skate or at the Y, there's a safety issue involved in having that equipment out there all the time. That's one reason, but the other is that the Commissioners have all agreed that we should support this because of the huge cost of our equipment and the investment that the city has in keeping this equipment going for as long as possible. If you've spoken to our fleet manager, you can see how hard everyone works to keep the equipment going as long as it possibly can, and nothing gets wasted. When, you know, a truck can no longer perform at the first level, we put it down to the next level. So I would urge you all to support this, to protect the city's investment in its very expensive equipment, and also, for the reasons Lisa stated, if all the equipment is under one roof, preventive maintenance will be so much simpler for everybody involved. So I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak in favor of R. 24035? Seeing no one else. Testimony in opposition.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Director Cummings.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. I just wanted to highlight a couple of points. One, I wanted to make sure it was explicitly clear that this is money that has already been authorized. What we're seeking to do is just repurpose this authorization for what I look at as Phase Two of the entire total project. As Director Fotto noted, we got Phase One done under budget, so what we would like to do is start, design in particular of the Phase Two portion of the project, and that will give us better details, better cost estimates, and a better understanding as to what the total project would be. This is something that would be necessary at any, at this stage or at any stage of a project, and if we can get ahead of it now, it would do us well, it would do us well to put us in a place to be able to advance the entirety of the project as originally contemplated. So, Mr. Chairman, I hope that you'll repurpose these funds, this, and look favorably upon this legislation. Thank you.
Okay. Now, testimony in opposition? For this, only, only this legislation? For this, only, only this legislation?
My name is Christian Talix. I live at 23 Temple Street, Apartment 301, and I oppose this legislation, and I pass on my opportunity to test, for testimony.
Once again, testimony in favor? Seeing none. And once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none. I will add right now that the, as part of the Capital Improvements Committee, we have had discussions that when we have any new project coming up that's a building project, the plan has to come in first before we approve the actual construction. I'll also say that in the past, on many of our projects, we passed a bond, and the design of the building and the costing from the construction manager were in the bond, but then it wasn't until the construction manager priced it out that we had the actual price, and some people have had concerns with that. When we just did the project on Nine Riverside for the Police Department, we had the money in advance to do the plans and the pricing, so the bond was, was very accurate for what the anticipated expense was. That's probably going to become required as part of the CIC next year.
Ms. Chairman, would you like me to speak to that? Because I'm very familiar with that process that we implemented.
As well you are. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is really for the edification of the Board. So what we deployed with the Nine Riverside project is we, we looked at it as not just a one-phase construction project, but we broke it down for the design phase to be, if you will, a Phase 1A before we entered into the full construction project. And so therefore, we brought on the architect, we brought on the construction management from a costing perspective only for what's considered pre-construction services, and then we brought in an owner's project manager. We brought in these consultants to help us design and develop a budget that would meet what was originally laid out in the scope of work in the, in the project as it was defined. And so that's why now, as, as you hear the Nine Riverside project moving forward, we have very strong and high level of confidence in the construction estimates that are being provided to us. And when we go forward for the bond authorization for the construction, this would be, if you will, Phase 1B of the, of the project, making it the total project cost. We anticipate this construction with a guaranteed maximum price based off of a fully built-out 100% design plan. And as Chairman Dowd had indicated, this gives much more confidence in, in the construction costs as, as outlined in the, in the project. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing on R. 24035 at 7:34 PM.
Just one more point of order, Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
If it is, if it's okay with you and the other members, I'm going to get back to my daughter's birthday, and I'm going to step away from the Zoom.
Okay.
Take care.
Yep. And now I will open the public hearing on R. 24038 at 7:35 PM, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of grant funds pursuant to Contract Amendment Number 2 in the amount of $863,694 from the State and New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various Public Health and Community Services grant activities. Is there someone here to present what that resolution entails?
Good evening. Bobby Bagley, Chief Public Health Official and Director for our City of Nashua, Division of Public Health and Community Services. This is funding that supports several of the Public Health Network Services grants that we provide services to, which includes our Public Health Emergency Preparedness, our Behavioral Health or Bureau of Drug and Alcohol Services, as well as the Public Health Advisory Council, and the Continuum of Care, which focuses on substance misuse and prevention. These, these, and, and it also includes funding for our Medical Reserve Corps that will allow for us to do tracking of the supplies that we have over at Gilson Road, and to also support any trainings that we do for our Medical Reserve Corps, which will be deployed in the event of an emergency. And so the funding goes across the fiscal year of part of '24, because there's an amendment that included additional funds on the FEP grant. It also had additional funds added to the MRC Corps grant, which is, includes purchasing of the tracking program, and then it includes funding for fiscal year '25 and '26, which covers our FEP coordinator, our behavioral health strategist. It also covers the position, some hours of our epidemiologists, and some hours of our Public Health Administrative Services coordinator. The work that we do under these grants is in response to the scope of services that are delivered to us through the state of New Hampshire, to be in response to not just emergency events, but also to do the planning for those events as well, to make sure that we have the volunteers in place to respond to those events, to prepare for our Community Health Improvement Plan and our Community Health Assessment that is done every three years. We just finished up our Community Health Assessment, and so this will fund the Community Health Improvement Plan that we will start working on in the next several, in the next several months. This funding is essential for us to be able to deliver some of the services that we provide, not only in the City of Nashua, but also in the surrounding towns as a part of the network, greater Nashua network services that we deliver in the community.
Okay. Are there any amplifying questions for Director Bagley? Seeing none. And testimony in favor, I assume you're, based on what you just said, you're, that testimony is in favor.
This testimony is in favor of us accepting and appropriating these funds.
Thank you. Did you have anything else to say in, in favor, or just, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony in favor? Seeing none. Testimony in opposition?
Christian Talix, 23 Temple Street, Apartment 301. Opposition without testimony.
Any additional testimony in opposition? Seeing none. Again, testimony in favor? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing on R. 24038 at 7:39 PM, and open the public hearing on R. 24041 at 7:39 PM. Authorizing the Mayor and the City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,750,000 for the city's sewer infrastructure improvement and sewer and drain casting replacement programs. Who is going to speak to that?
That'll be me, Mr. Chair.
Yes. And, to the engineer?
Good, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Dan Hudson, City Engineer. DPW Engineering works together with the Wade Water Department on this program, so I'm speaking this tonight on behalf of the team here. But this is the funding that we use to make all sewer improvements in the city, the, the projects that are in the collection system, not at the plant. This is what we, this is the funding we need and use for the dig sewer work, as well as the CCTV and lining work. Also, we fund sewer casting replacements out of this, about $500,000 to $600,000 a year goes into sewer casting replacements due to the paving program and other things that we have ongoing. These funds are also used for emergency repairs that, you know, we may not foresee but come up during the year, and this enables us to contract somebody to take care of those. And I'd be happy to address any questions.
Are there any clarifying questions? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do have one. Is this bond going to be paid for through the sewer user fees?
Yeah, excellent point. This, this is a bond that's paid back through the enterprise, the sewer enterprise funds.
Okay. Is, just to maybe clear that question up for the next couple ones, is that true of the next two items?
Yes, it's true for this item and the following item.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions for, any other questions? Then, I ask for testimony in favor of R. 24041. Seeing none. Testimony in opposition?
Christian Talix, I continue to oppose, without testimony. This one as well.
All right. Any other in opposition? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in favor? Seeing none. And once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none additional. So I will close the public hearing on R. 24041 at 7:42 PM, and open up the public hearing on Resolution R. 24042 at 7:42 PM. R. 24042 authorizing the Mayor and the City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $925,143 for various wastewater capital improvements.
Again, for the record, Dan Hudson, City Engineer. This addresses various projects, as noted in the resolution, the annual stormwater management and abatement program, the combined sewer overflow consent decree operational expenses, CSO flooding, as well as ongoing operations maintenance of the Merrimack River levee that we, that we maintain, the city owns and maintains. And I'd be happy to address any questions about any of those programs if you should have any.
Do any of the Aldermen have any questions on that resolution? Seeing none. I'll open it up for testimony in favor of R. 24042. Seeing none. Testimony in opposition to R. 24042?
Christian Talix, 23 Temple Street, Apartment 301. Security professionals categorize vulnerabilities by the number of days a security professional has to mitigate the risks born of that vulnerability existing. Being that some risks are necessary for a system or product to function in its intended manner, some vulnerabilities are left to exist. In the name of a, for a vulnerability for which, of which a security professional has no time with which to mitigate the risks to a system or product, is a zero-day vulnerability. I think the truth rings mentioning the home today appropriate as the Supreme Court decides the constitutionality of camping bans. There is a big zero-day vulnerability to the City of Nashua. That is the ignorance of law from all the branches of government in its governing class. This unfortunate reality is a zero-day vulnerability, not in a vacuum, but when intermingled with the overzealous, with an overzealous sense of honor and duty. This ignorance leads to mistakes, some quantifiable, others not so much. To further this dialogue, I'd like to introduce the reality that there's a monthly report on the homeless to the Nashua Police Commissioners Board.
Excuse me?
Why?
We're only taking input on this resolution.
And which I oppose.
Not seeing any correlation of what you're saying to this resolution.
Okay, may I finish?
If it's involving this resolution, yes.
Okay, thank you. Why? Why are the police surveying the homeless? As the law surely continues to reflect the hearts and minds of today's Americans, can Nashua afford to give armed individuals sole responsibility for interacting with the homeless population here in Nashua, as simply existing as a homeless person becomes less and less legal? As Nashua seeks to mitigate these horrifying, quantifiable mistakes, Nashua should be playing chess.
Excuse me?
Yes.
That has nothing to do with this resolution, so I would ask you to please stop and sit.
I oppose.
Once again, I'll ask for testimony in favor? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing at 7:46 PM, and open the public hearing on R. 24045 at 7:46 PM. Authorizing the Mayor to enter into an amended transportation alternatives program, federal and project agreement with the state of New Hampshire, for the purpose of upgrading sidewalks and creating bicycle lanes on Locke Street and Whitney Street, and to accept and appropriate an additional $24,309.81 for this project. Is there someone here that's going to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Again, for the record, Dan Hudson, City Engineer. So this is for the Locke and Whitney Street project, which, as noted, will create bicycle lanes, improve sidewalks on those streets. Sometime has gone high since the original agreement was executed, and the Department of Transportation is requesting that we enter into an amended agreement. Some of the terms have changed slightly, they, is additional federal share that we are, through this resolution, receiving and appropriating. The local match for this project is, to my understanding, is already funded and in various accounts, so this is not a request for additional local match at this time, is simply updating the agreement and receiving those additional federal funds.
Are there any amplifying questions on members of the Board on this resolution? Seeing none. I will now open up testimony in favor of R. 24045. Seeing none. Testimony in opposition to this particular resolution?
Christian Talix, 23 Temple Street, Apartment 301. This motion is a disorder, is a symptom of disorder. There's no reason to spend money on this stuff, at least not first, or at least the passing of this motion without actual substantive change to the way that we handle the homeless population in Nashua is a symptom of disorder. I, as a citizen of Nashua, propose two motions. One, for a commission centered around the writing of easy-to-digest primers for all the laws Nashua expects Nashua to follow, and second, a creation of a commission focused on replacing 100% of the hours spent by NPD to survey the homeless with hours performed by unarmed persons. This will keep people safe in that.
You're getting off topic.
No problem. I oppose this motion.
Any other opposition? Seeing none. Testimony again in favor? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing on R. 24045 at 7:49 PM, and open up the public hearing on R. 24046 at 7:49 PM. R. 24046 is authorizing the Mayor and the City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $700,000 for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department for Hill's landfill. Mr. LaFleur?
Yes, sir, Jeff LaFleur, Superintendent of Solid Waste. This, this resolution here is, as it says, authorizing $700,000 for various improvements. There's some projects that need to be done at the landfill, some of our buildings, and outbuildings are starting to fall apart, and we're going to do some major repairs to them. This also includes Phase 3 and Phase 4 engineering and oversight for the construction of the Phase 4 landfill, which will gain us about 40 years of airspace.
Are there any questions from the Board members relative to this resolution? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Testimony in favor? Seeing none. Testimony in opposition to this particular resolution?
Thank you. My name is Christian Talix, 23 Temple Street, Apartment 301. If I can speak for the people who are not here, no one who is low-income or houseless wants to ever be surveyed by the police. Being homeless is not a crime.
Again, you are off-topic. This is for the landfill. You have something relative to being in.
May I finish?
Opposition to this money for the landfill, you can speak. Otherwise, this is not a time for general conversation.
May I finish?
No.
I oppose.
Any other testimony in opposition? Seeing none. Testimony in favor? Seeing none. Once again, testimony in opposition? Seeing none. I will close. I will close the public hearing on R. 24046 at 7:51. And Alderman Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion at the April 22nd, 2024. Special meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, excuse me, we're going to have to do it by roll call. Alderman Lopez.
Anita.
Please call the roll.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Tevo?
Yes.
Alderman Jettin?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Guebeva?
Yes.
Alderman Moran has left us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
And Alderman O'Brien votes yes. And you have... Yeah, I just forget it.
Yes. So we're adjourned at 7:52 PM.
What time did you close in?